As they are needed, or as the leases come to an end. We hope to receive the remaining twenty-three vehicles we ordered last year within the next two quarters. There's that whole thing with the vehicles right now where it's it's kind of backed up like everything else when you try to purchase something. We also um. Put in two purchase orders to purchase the following two Mac recycling trucks and one one trash truck. Now move on to our traffic report. Our traffic department handled. One thousand one hundred and two P A one calls which they had to mark. Which were calls that came in that are are employees go out and mark the utilities that we have in under the ground. We did fifty-five P A one calls marked in white for new installs which. We market in white and then other people have to come out and mark the utilities around what we marked in white so that the work can be done for whatever is needed for Veronica. Sixty-two handicap signs and pole with poles and bases installed. Six hundred and forty signs were made in the sign shop. Fifty-one signs installed with poles and bases. Two hundred street lights were marked with ribbon. That needed repaired. Three hundred and twelve empty poles removed throughout the city. Twenty-nine replaced poles base and signs that were knocked down. Six controllers dropped off to our vendor. Ten curves were painted. Two hundred and thirty-six Cobra head streetlights repaired. Seventy-two decorative streetlights repaired. They removed the electric lines for the streetlights that were broken from a tree that fell. Ten new signs were installed for the green belt. Eight pedestrian signals and poles cleaned from a knock from the knockdown and replaced with new ones. They painted the north lot of City Island with park for parking spaces. Two P P and L poles cleaned up with P P and L. Twelve school zone flashers re were reprogrammed. They rewired a generator to help the police start the control van. Two signs installed on two trash trucks. Hundred and eight delineators for no parking. Seventy-two signal cabinets inspected. They cut and repaired a conduit for the streetlights on Market Street to remove the conduit for a crack contractor to dig. Twenty-six type three. One hundred and eighty water barricades, eighty-nine type one. Two hundred and two cones, eight hundred and seventy-eight pedestrian barricades. Eight arrow boards, eight message boards, eight light towers, twelve signs, twelve stand signs. Four planter boxes. Six metal barricades, two generators, ten electrical cord ramps, four electrical cords. Were placed and removed for city events. Which were the New New Year's Eve celebration fire and ice and the Lucky Charm Race and the Saint Patrick's Day Parade. They set up and cleaned up for the outdoor show, two message boards, two arrow boards. Switched four signs, closed the left turning lane and reopened it and covered and uncovered. The left signal head and placed a hundred and fifty cones out for those events. I will now turn it over to Mr. Percy to present the engineering report.
Evening, Council. As you know, as last came before you, uh, the winter season doesn't do us any justice when it comes to projects. Things slow down because they're not making any material. So when only one major project taking place right now is a Mulder Square as well as a Mulder Square Park. Uh, as you uh. Go up a market and marketing Cameron Street look to your right, see a park developing. It's a nice S swing walkway as you approach the old Coliseum Dairy Street. That's been in place to get in place for quite a while. They just installed a lot of shrubbery trees, things of that nature. It's come along pretty well. It's gonna be a walkway up to the Dairy Street. It's uh come along really good. We really uh like the results of it, excuse me. Waiting for the railing to be installed, so uh be a little easier for the folks to walk their way up there. We're gonna light it up with above, I think it's eight lights, light up like a stadium. So uh what you seen there in the past with some unpleasant debris left over from uh. You know, situations with citizens will hopefully be reduced with the lights. That being said, it's about fifty cent fifty percent complete. Also, last time I was here, we had stated, we started a utility. Of project with the utility companies that's been in the city, something I noticed when I first came. A lot of the restoration projects with creative pottles that uh. Deputy Director spoke about, we're trying to get a restoration where we're on top of it from the city's perspective. Making sure our utility companies are following through with a timely fashion and making sure these potholes are reduced. And uh if they're not, we're caught falling back up on you and seeing what's going on as well as our inspectors are out daily. Uh from sunup to sundown in terms of the time of any work and referencing, making sure these projects are in good safety standings as well. So these projects are on Seneca Street, there's paving and restoration going on. Um, my C R W shallow is their company doing their uh work on Emerald and Woodbine between fourth and sixth. As a gas uh main going in for E G I that is Miller pipeline doing their work. A mulberry silver terrace to uh Evergreen Street, New Water Main Line and services by Wescon for C R W. On Front Street, I'm sure everybody's seen on Front Street, they have two long black pipes. Going down all the way to their pump station to the dam. Uh, that is for moving their sewer line down to installing a new slip what they call slip line in there. Excuse me, uh seventeenth and Market, C R W um sewer repaired by Rogel. Fifteenth Street Vernon to Berry Hill manhole and inlet replacement for C R W by Fairod. Uh, twenty-two hundred block and twenty-four block uh Berry Hill. There's a U G I project going on where they're moving the gas lines to the outside of homes, the inside homes. It's a very good safety issue because they sometimes the gas leaks on the inside. Um, I'd have done to myself my own home. I understand that project. Uh, the thing with that is we got to keep them safe though. Because of the morning hours and the afternoon hours of the school in that area, so we keep the school zone safe. Uh, you have uh Brookwood. And Dairy Street from the twenty-four twenty-six block shallow doing that work for the U G I restorations. Uh sewer replacement Myers Alley for C R W by Rogel and in front of a. State Archive, we have additional paving, we're taking from our Allison Hill putting over there some monies we're using, we're transferring the money over there and uh. Doing a little bit of paving over there, the first four hundred feet. So we can kind of marry together with the federal court and the city, so it doesn't like is a big mistake in there. That's that when a project's with utility companies throughout the city. Had a plethora amount of uh permits, people are working with the city, quite a bit of work's being done, whole lot. To the tune of two hundred and twelve permits we issued for a total nine nine thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's my report, family.
I'd also like to note that the two recycling trucks that we're purchasing will be reimbursed through grant programs. And and that's all we have today.
All right. How how many months do we have in that first quarter? It it sounds like you spread it over more than four months. That's a that's a lot of work. You guys are are really um moving things along and and doing a lot, so we appreciate. Everything that that you're um you're doing right now. Um. You know, you're the the backbone and the heartbeat of the city, really, without um public works, everything else starts to fall apart. Um. I did receive questions from a citizen about uh the recycling bins that were once um. I guess they're almost like recycling dumpsters that were once at the uptown shopping center that were removed. Is there any way to get that replaced or or something similar in a in a different area?
So the issue with those were that people were using them as a cover up for dumping illegal dumping. So the owners actually asked us to remove them. The owners of the uptown shopping center.
Mm-hmm.
So when they made that request, we followed through because it was their property. So. I think we were trying to find other places to put the recycling bins like kind of in the same vicinity. But we really haven't come up with anything as of yet.
Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening.
Day West Director of Public Works, City Harrisburg. Um, are you talk, are you stating about the glass uh dumpsters? Or what or or what recycle dumpsters?
I believe there were, I believe there was glass and plastic and there were maybe about four dumpsters in a row there.
Okay, the four dumpsters in a row that were blew, they they were provided by the county.
Okay.
There are county containers, the only container that we had up there was a glass container.
Okay.
So the other containers, the county removed, we never had recycling there.
Okay, would. And I understand we're we're trying to figure out if we can find another location. Um, just I had some citizens who were just questioning if they had a a way to to continue doing that.
We we are are uh the process of placing the glass container in another location. And we are working with Dolphin County presently. Uh, I will have a conversation with them about the recycling dumpsters and we'll be able to get back to you with uh less concrete answer.
Okay.
More concrete answers.
Great, thank you. And then um. We we alluded to illegal dumping, which is has been a hot topic in the city probably for. I don't know, probably as long as we've been a city. Um. We were putting cameras in place to help catch people. Are are we getting any results from that?
Yes, we have uh cameras, we have footage, we are are getting it, are receiving footage. And we're turning it over to the police. Our commissioners are helping us with trying to turn away investigation with the evidence that we do have. We currently have six cameras, it's mobile and we're we are in the process of. Of taking six more cameras to put out there. And we placed them in the areas uh two week period at a time. So we we able to be mobile to put place them throughout the city. We're also in a program to purchase uh, we're trying to purchase a half a dozen more cameras that are more visible. The cameras that we have take pictures, constant pictures, we need more video, so we in the process of purchasing. More updated cameras so we can have video.
That's great. Um, it. Do we have any ability to, I I every seems like every citizen has a ring camera anymore, cameras on the side of their home. Do we have any uh plans to engage with any of the citizens that may have um just their cameras running at all time?
Any resident or citizen that has any information that will be that will be able to help us. And any investigation that they will not be used, their name will not be used, they they will be. Uh, totally out of picture of the direction that we are going to incarcerate. These criminals because that's what they are, they're criminals. And and we will do the investigation ourselves, but we will take on any and every info in information that we can receive.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Um, that's what I have for questions and I'll um. Turn it over to uh my colleagues and I'll start with her right. Um, Ms. Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, Councilman Lawson, and good evening to all of you. Thank you for your report. Um, you have done a lot within a short period of time, so thank you for sharing. Um, all of the great things that you're doing. I had two questions, one more, um, actually three questions. And two maybe are a little bit more clarification. The first one was with the P A one calls. If um. Or do you all make the P A one calls if someone wants to do work or developer wants to do work? Is that my understanding or? Um, do they need to call? I think it's U G I or P P and L.
The contractor will need to call and place that um P A one call. I place the P A one calls for the works that we do, like when we put signs and stuff in polls and uh I place that call for the stuff that the city's doing.
Okay, thank you.
And when a when a contractor places a one call, she has to go out and mark the lines that she that we own around the area that they place the one call for.
Oh, okay, so will the does the contractors still need to contact then?
The P A one call system.
One call system is a is a a number.
Mm-hmm.
When they call that number, it branches out to everyone who would own a utility in that.
Area.
In that area that the one call is placed.
Oh, okay.
So she would receive a. So she would receive a call saying someone put a one call out. And then she would know to go out and mark the the lines that the city owns in that area for street lighting and and things like that.
Okay, thank you, um. The other question was, and I feel like we've went over it before, but I'm still not sure how to do it, so if I'm confused, I'm sure some residents are. But if there's a street light that is not working. What is the procedure again, I've got, do not remember, so I'm probably not alone. By my little ass.
You gave her phone number last time, I remember.
I thought so, I thought she did, and I'm like, I don't know where this thing is, when I saw one flash, I was like, I don't know where it is. And I try to do things just like a normal resident, you know, not on city council so that there are glitches. I can be like, hey, I I called and this was a, you know, so I don't have it anymore, I don't know.
So they can call the uh three-one-one system.
Okay.
And then um the gentleman out and he'll answer and then send me an email. Um, but they can also call me directly with in. Reason now, like six o'clock cutoff.
Reasonable hour, okay, would you be able to email your number, I mean, you don't have to say it out loud here, I don't mind. Now, three-one-one, I will say I have trouble with that, and I don't know if it's because. My number doesn't have a seven-one-seven area code, but when I call three-one-one, it does, it never works for me.
I've heard that with a lot of people, and I think it is um individuals that have.
Okay.
Out of area.
Yeah, so I can't use three-one-one. Yeah, so I don't have a a landline.
That's not accurate because I have an out of area cell phone and it used to always work.
Oh my.
And then it it hasn't worked like this entire year, because I use it as a shortcut to get transferred to staff and I can't do that.
Oh yeah, I don't know if it's working.
Yeah, I don't think it, well.
I don't know, for certain people.
Yeah.
So I will say that is glitchy, I don't know who to talk to about that, I guess, something, but that's a glitchy.
It may be I T.
Yeah.
Okay.
And also after hours, if someone responds to like the non-emergency number, we are, we are usually on call, there, we we kind of rotate, so we would get a call from. The non-emergency people.
Oh, that works.
And we would respond to, like, if someone runs over a streetlight or something.
Hmm.
We would come out and respond to that.
We get called quite often to come out, I'm sure.
Okay, so I'll I'll have that information too, okay. And my last question, why not, um, what is the status of State Street Project? I know, you had, it's a must, you're gonna have to do it.
So State Street Project is uh, we're waiting for Penn Dot to give us a response, and right now it's in their hands. So we're in a halt right now.
Is it a response on the design or the money?
I took that into our engineer, we we keep up with this almost uh every Monday, we actually have a meeting every Wednesday, every other Wednesday.
Okay.
So it starts off waiting for them to give us some resolution. To the design, I get okay to design.
Okay, there's a.
So that's where.
Thank you, it's on.
All right, thank you, and then um Vice President Green.
Thank you, uh, I don't have too many questions, some of them I have maybe a little more technical. Um, about the the budget side, and so I might have to follow up with uh Finance Department about it. Uh, but kind of just a a question uh on page one, under consulting. It shows that we've spent one hundred and eleven percent of the consulting budget, um, but also see that it shows forty-three thousand in encumbrances. So the encumbrances, that's from the consulting from last year. And so that pulled against this year's budget, or were they paid off out of last year's budget and they're just showing in this chart?
Well, well. So we.
I was about to say, so we paid them twice?
No, no, we used um leftover money from last year's budget until that ran out and then it was transferred over to this year's budget.
Okay, so then we will be out of consulting line funds for this year. Okay. And then do we plan on pulling it from somewhere else?
Um. Yeah, I mean. Uh, and and sometime in the future, we we return for a quest for reallocation fund.
Okay.
I I will note the engineering's covered through at least, I think, three separate budget locations, which I think was in uh the Finance Director's uh chart that she, I think, produced recently to council. I can't tell you what the distribution is, but I think it depends whether it's a capital project funded, if it's a consulting funding under the, or under the bureau. And I believe this is third line item where it where it comes out of as well. So you have to sort of be project specific to determine where the costs are coming from, including, I think, the other ones, liquid fuels. Where it can come out of, so you it's very project specific, some projects qualify, for example, liquid fuels, others don't. Um, but which or which would require someone other than me to answer your question.
Okay, so I'll follow up with the Finance Department kind of about that. Um, and then also kind of under the same guise, but on page two, looking at the um maintenance services, looks like we're pretty far over budget there. Um, is it a specific reason why are we, is it like kind of just the way we're budgeting or did things come up? That that's causing it to, our projections kind of to be off, although it's not by. By percentage, it's a large amount, well by dollars, it's not a large amount. So just kind of looking forward to, you know, as we're, as we're budgeting things, just trying to make sure that we're budgeting to the best of our abilities. Um. In the future, so. Did something happen or that was just kind of? Like normal? I believe, I believe it's um vehicle maintenance.
Yes, that was what come under Dave Baker's spending of the budget. He would be able to answer that more in the detail than.
Okay.
Works, there are some, and and Neighborhood Services budget, there are other departments that spend out of this budget.
Okay. Well, that's something to follow up with uh Director Baker about.
Yes, yes, right.
All right, I think that's about all that I have, thank you, guys.
And President Bowers, any questions?
Thank you, I just have uh two questions, one is regarding um. The grant funding that will be used for the recycling trucks that you mentioned, are you able to speak to that a little bit more or?
Yes, we have five hundred nine thousand dollars in um grant money to purchase two recycle packers. And that's reimbursement of what we're purchasing these two recycle trucks with that we're purchasing currently.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, and then the second question, I don't think I missed any. Uh personnel vacancies being filled during this quarter, I think the anticipation was for. Uh, in fleet management and automotive mechanic uh to be filled in the second quarter. And then a traffic technician two vacancy to be filled in quarter three. Are there any other personnel?
We are looking to fill.
Vacancies I'm missing?
Uh, uh, it's called H E O, which is Heavy Equipment Operator Position.
Mm-hmm.
We have street maintenance worker positions that we need to fill, we lost some employees. And the first quarter that we have to replace, we just lost today. And two days ago, two mode equipment operators that we have to replace. And we are replacing currently, that's in the process uh one labor position. And we have one mode equipment operator's position that has went through, waiting for a start date. I just interviewed a street maintenance worker position that we're putting through and I interviewed. A heavy equipment operator position that we are putting through currently.
Okay.
And I have to replace the uh sign technician.
Oh, okay.
Passed up to the uh.
Engineer.
Department of Engineer Tech, so he's one of our uh inspectors, I have hard, working a real hard out of the street. He's doing pretty well, Andrew Boone.
Yes, Andrew, congratulations to him, that's great. Okay, so you replaced.
No, I have to.
Okay, you're, okay, that's a vacancy to be filled, okay.
Prior, Mike Miller retired, so that's where Andrew Boone is giving the opportunity.
Excellent, that's wonderful. Okay, those were my only two questions, thank you all for your work this quarter.
Right, um, Councilman Majors.
Good evening, and I apologize for uh my lateness, so if this question has already been addressed, I apologize. Um, just one question, I know as the spring is here, and I know that's, you know, start a construction season, but also uh, you know. Helping to patch our road, so just for um residents can just talk about the process that they need to go through if they are looking to request a pothole. To be fixed, we haven't already addressed that.
Yes, we um are out to pavement season, currently we're able to go out early because of the winter being so light as it is. Uh, we, report was given that we did a hundred and twenty potholes up to this point in this quarter. We have a hot box continue to go out continuously on a daily basis. Also, the um asphalt companies will be opening hot asphalt season as of April the fifteenth. And will able to get some more permanent mix, will we able to do more permanent potholes? And we will open our pays and see paving season in that capacity on towards the end of April into May.
Okay, and then uh last question for me, again, if it's been already asked and addressed, we addressed what the uh. I know we, a few years ago, we had went through the process of sort of doing a a triage of all the the current status of all the streets in the city and and working on that. The repaving, uh, can we talk about where that process currently stands as we're entering into uh repaving and uh season? So what big projects are on the horizon for um?
We.
Somewhere in order.
We 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 restructured the uh five-year paving plan into what was paved through year one, year two. And what was not paved, and we put them at the top of the priority list that was not paid, we combined another list. We will get the list to council, so uh they can be abreast to uh what we're currently doing. We had a meeting this morning with uh Dai Wood uh about. Our contracting out, we are looking to work on contracting out Berry Hill Street. And we will be meeting this week and next week to have further conversation on. The uh contract and its preliminaries and direction of where, what we're gonna take and how we're gonna do.
Okay, all right, thank you, no further questions, Chair Lawson.
All right, thank you, um, Councilman Daniels.
The only question I have, which I'm not sure if it was already addressed, um, since the last time you had a quarterly report. Um, we had questions about, um, how does the city contract with nonprofits when you're picking up the garbage from their property? So um if someone could address like what the process is of, you know, if there are other nonprofits who are interested in doing the same, et cetera, et cetera.
When, when, when you state non uh picking up trash for nonprofits, what do you particularly mean?
The most recent issue, the most recent time this came up was with the um, the Joshua group uh cleanup.
Yes, so that that was a complaint from a citizen that frankly I found to be, have no basis in reality. Um, that that group performs free cleanups on lands we can't go on to and gathers the trash. And then Public Works picks that up, that's not a contract, that is a volunteer group, like every other volunteer group going out and picking up trash. Putting it someplace for Public Works to pick it up, that's as far as I could tell what happened in that, which has happened again and again and again all through the year for groups who gather trash.
Yeah, so there must be some kind of.
It's not a contract, it's just, it it it's just, it it's an arrangement for uh nonprofits and others, like neighborhood groups for Saturday cleanups. Well, you.
Getting that.
The process, I can say, the process will be, they will contact Public Works to let us know that they would have a, that they're having a cleanup. And and when they are having a cleanup, uh, like currently, we're going to have a um. The uh Great Harrisburg cleanup, which is the twenty-second, which is arranged that we're gonna clean, they're gonna have a cleanup and we're going to. Be a part of their cleanup, we have a cleanup with the Y M C A office six street, if they schedule a cleanup, we participate, we meet. Uh, design a schedule to uh event of what we're gonna do and we make arrangements to have that cleanup. And it it goes and to, we have a a fund as part of Neighborhood Services that we take out of for those cleaners.
So are there rules around what kind of entities we enter in agreement, or is it just nonprofit, do we enter a private business, like?
One, there's, one, there's no agreements, right, two, it's a, it's a group coming and saying they want to do a volunteer event. And coordinating with the city and Public Works, I think the bigger issue tends to be if three of them want to do it the same week or weekend. And we, and I think Public Works traditionally tried to coordinate that it's not all at the same time. Because they can only put staff in so many places at once, but it's there's, it's not a, it's just not a contractual arrangement. It's 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 just volunteers coordinating with the city to do a beautification project, you know, and so they, everyone's a little bit different because you work with the groups that you have.
But we don't have anything like, so like, let's say one of our workers gets injured while doing that thing, like, are they then?
They're covered by workers comp, they're on the job.
So they're, so, okay.
I mean, they they eventually be the same people under their union contract who would pick up that trash no matter what, right? Except that there's always more trash than hours in the day, you know, with people dumping illegally around the city. So the, you know, I think the city's become pretty dependent on the, on the groups hosting these events, getting people to volunteer for their own neighborhoods to clean them up.
And this particular one, this involved, this was also school property, right?
That just happened to be school property, that was, they had an arrangement with Joshua Farm and uh. The, that was the property they had arranged with for them and uh. Whatever ministry, Wild, Wild Heart Ministries was was on that property before them, there was another group on that property, um, but that is.
Do we have a relationship, so do we have an agreement with the school district?
We have a very complicated relationship with the school district about trash, more than I could sit here and go into, it's very complicated. It was complicated before, it got more complicated because of COVID and try, they were trying to balance out. Their bills with the fact that schools were closed, you know, um, but we have been in long discussions over the years for the school district about trash. Their, their, their base of taxpayers is the identical base to city taxpayers. And so, you know, uh, they have a huge amount of trash unless something has changed, uh, they have many, many properties. And, you know, that's a negotiation that I was just discussing with the business administrator and the mayor today that we have to go back to again now. Because an agreement that was reached during COVID, I think, expired on March thirty-first or April first. And so now we have to go back and talk to the school district again for something that works for both them and us and honors our other trash-related conscience.
So as of right now, the only process is an individual person, a nonprofit group or business that organize whatever and then just contact Public Works. And then.
Yes, and we will have to meet, we will have a site visit and we will have communication and we will have dialogue and set up everything. And it's not just a nonprofit organization, it's it's community itself, we do it throughout the communities throughout the summer, all summer long.
And that is the only question.
And just to to make it easy for any um individual who's watching and maybe thinking, how how do they contact Public Works?
Do we have a a Public Works uh number to contact Public Works? I'll get you the information.
Okay.
I'll get you the information.
All right, I I believe they they should be able to find it on the website.
And the Public Works number is on the website also, and um, and we will, like I stated, we will set up a a site visit and communication and set up an event and. All right, if they state that they are having a neighborhood cleanup and would like to, Public Works to participate, then we go forth and we go through a process.
Okay, well, any neighbors that are watching, it's time for spring cleaning, so please contact Public Works, because they're ready for you. And Congressman Rodriguez, any questions?
Congressman.
Congressman, well, he's, I'm I'm speaking it into existence. I'm speaking prophetically.
I appreciate that, Chair Lawson, um. Uh, but with that, just to piggyback off of that, we are getting our dates enacted now, as Director Wes had told me for this year's Hot Spot Saturday. Um, council had approved a great initiative, volunteer base, and we removed a little over ten tons uh last year with um. Co-director uh Griffin, Mr. Austin, and of course Dave West jumping in and appreciate that, so uh Chair Lawson, if you wanted to help, you know, um. Spirithead that with myself and the rest of council, that would be phenomenal, because it's one thing to, for everyone to pick up trash, but we want to do it correctly. We want to do it coordinated, um, just to minimize any, you know, anybody getting hurt, because if we say that, we're just having everybody running out with bags. Which is a good thing, but you know, we want to make sure it's disposed correctly and there are guidelines and some rules, not only the city, but the county has as well. Um, but I didn't really have any questions, just more of that statement, uh, Director Wes, thank you for bringing that to my attention, so that shows the swarm is working on it. Uh, and as soon as we get that solid. And as soon as we get that solidified, we'll be announcing those finalized dates here through council. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Chair Lawson.
All right, and thank you to the the soon to be elected congressman. So that that is I don't have any questions, and I believe that's the end of our report for Public Works. So I'll turn it back to the president.
Thank you, Councilman Lawson. We will now move to the work of the Building and Housing Committee. I will defer to Chair Majors.
Thank you, President Bowers, for the Building and Housing Committee. This evening, we will have two quarterly reports. The first is from the Bureau of Communications. We have director, comms director, Mr. Maisel here, would it mind finding us with the report?
As we wait to get this fired up, how's everyone doing tonight?
We're doing well.
Hey, good, good, good. Yeah, so soon as, oh, here it comes. So as soon as a lot of what I have in this PowerPoint, you may recognize from the budget presentation, but because Councilman Lawson didn't join us until January, new to him, maybe repetitive to the rest of you, gonna breeze through it anyway, just so we are all on the same page. So, as you know, I am the director of the Bureau of Communications. Underneath me is Melissa Mahones Ortiz. She is basically the top multilingual specialist. She translates more documents throughout the city that I could think of. She is a lifesaver for for so many people. Also, Asher Johnson, who you guys know, and Emily Speck, who sits back there, is a tremendous multimedia specialist. Our office has basically three forms of communication. We work with the press locally. We work with in our office here in the city and and get communications out between departments and also the citizens of the city and the probably the top way we do that is through our website, which I'm happy to say that from quarter four of twenty twenty two to quarter one of twenty twenty three, we are increasing the number of articles and press releases that we're putting out on the website. So even though it's only thirty one to twenty two, it's still growth and and that's what we want to see. We just want to be able to continue to grow and be able to do more in each consecutive quarter. Uh, our main outreach continues to be Facebook. That is our number one outreach. The first quarter of the year, you can see we have a two hundred and fifty five percent increase in reach compared to where we were in quarter four of twenty twenty two. The main reason for that is a post that we had. I'm not sure how many you are familiar, but the Police Bureau did a retirement ceremony recently for one of the retired Canines who recently passed away, Zoe. That is a post that simply went viral. No other way to put it. As we're talking right now, it has racked up about three hundred and forty thousand views on Facebook. And it's as tragic as that is, she passed away a lot sooner than a lot of people expected. It really showed the city in a positive light, and that's ultimately what we are kind of hanging our hat on there because all we can do is showcase the city. And what we're able to do there is is do just that and showcase the city in a positive light. Our WHBG twenty growth continues to be strong. We have three regular sets of programming, studio sessions at Channel Twenty, which highlights local musicians. What's the word Harrisburg, which is our 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 talk show that we air weekly every Wednesday. Passport Harrisburg, excuse me, Passport Harrisburg highlights different places and events that are taking place throughout the city. Those are little featurettes that we put together. One of the things that you see there is a still for becoming the change, and I want to try to show a clip of this. This is a docu-series that we put together. I was briefly explaining this to you back in December that our communications team was in the process of working on. This was a three-part docu-series following around the six-month Police Academy. Our team of Asher and Emily followed our five and then became four cadets at the Police Academy in Temple. They gave us unfiltered access. So we split the six months into three parts. I'll let you go on Channel Twenty and and our YouTube page and watch it if you haven't done so yet. But this is the trailer that we put together before it started.
Thirty-nine-year-old retired Marine after twenty years. Jacob Warner.
My name is Michael David.
Fowler, one.
My name is Andrew Jones, thirty-three. Work as an EMT for Siskiyou County EMS, starting off with Harrisburg PD.
What happens from this day forward is going to follow you in your career.
The standards are extremely high at this academy.
So basically with that is that was a tremendous undertaking. It's it's hard to put into words the amount of hours and work that went into doing that, but we felt it was important to show that because it was Police Academy transparency the way people have not seen before. And we wanted to do it because when you're given that opportunity to highlight something and showcase something that people may have a differing view of. People don't see what goes on in the academy. Hack, which is where Harrisburg Police have traditionally gone, does not allow cameras in, so we can't show that. Temple, which is where this class went, is the first time Police used Temple, opened their doors to us and said, have at it. You are free to film whatever you want, microphone, whoever you want. We're in on this transparency thing and being able to showcase that is important. The three episodes were, I felt tremendous. They did a great job of telling the story of these cadets. I will say that we put up this series for Emmy Award consideration. We'll see what happens with that in August, but again, that would be something that would be really special for the city to say that the city of Harrisburg is Emmy nominated. So we'll see about that when the time comes. Uh, and then the the probably the main thing that everyone has questions about, which I know a lot of people are excited about, is what is going to be taking place here in council chambers later this year? And that is a pretty major tech renovation. Council generously approved the budget reallocation for a hundred thousand dollars a few weeks ago. We are working with and the contract is out there right now to Harrisburg-based company illuminated integration. They will be putting three brand-new monitors in here, eighty-six inch screens. I I have mock-up designs that I'll I'll show in a minute. Ten new microphones, so the microphone quality will improve. The speaker quality will improve. There will be amplified speaker systems, so the sound quality in here and also at home will improve. The long story short is this will enhance the viewing and listening experience for people here in chambers and also people watching from home. We also hope that it will allow for more at-home participation should that merit. So some of what you're gonna be seeing here, and again, this is just a mock-up design. Nothing is set in stone. They're not expected to come in here until council breaks for the summer. So this project will run from mid-July through mid-August or so. But you can see that we're gonna put in a eighty-six inch flatscreen monitor somewhere in the back. That is just where this mock design was there. We'll have new four K cameras mounted in the same spaces where you see cameras now, but they will be increased. Just to give you an idea of what we're working with, the cameras that you see now are broadcasting in seven-twenty P. That was two thousand eight standard. I don't believe council chambers have seen any tech upgrades in at least a decade, so this is gonna be pretty exciting. You'll have two eighty-six inch screens behind you. We'll be doing away with the projector screen once and for all. People will be able to see these presentations much more clearly. You'll be able to see behind me, the people up here will be able to see up there. People watching here will be able to see up there. Cameras will be pointed at one of the screens, actually not even that. The cameras or the 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 screens, you'll be able to punch it up in the rack up there where Emily is currently sitting because the increase in video inputs, right now, we only have three video input ability. We're going up to eight. What do we need eight for? We don't, but that is what is standard nowadays. So everything in that sense will increase. It'll just be a really positive step forward for council chambers and people who want to participate in council meetings and aren't able to make it down here as well. So that is pretty much it. Here is you all have a copy of my updated budget sheet as of the end of March. And I am happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Okay, thank you. I will start with questions to my left with Councilman Roger, you guys.
Thank you, Chair Majors. Thank you for being here, Mr. Maisel. Thank you for considering residents as they watch. I look forward to that new experience. I just look forward to actually hearing about whether that show's gonna win the award because imagine what that could do for public safety and how many people will want to start recruitment just because, I mean, you know, sometimes putting the medicine in the candy is what works. So if that'll get it done, best of luck.
Yeah, we we submitted the Emmy window is or the early window for discounted entries is closed. I've always I've been for my previous job, I had submitted Emmy awards for multiple years. March thirty first was always my deadline. Got to got to get called. The getting's good. And so we submitted for numerous awards, and I view it as it's almost like training because I want Asher and Emily do such an amazing job, and I want them to see and experience what the best work across the state and across the region is doing. And if we can get nominated and and they can see some of this other great work and be around that other great work, then it's it's kind of the old saying, rising tide lifts all ships. And that's kind of what I envisioned. So I want them to be able to experience that. So we submitted for, I believe, four or five different categories, bunch of different awards. But that is the one that I I am most proud of the work that Asher and Emily put together because that was a tremendous undertaking for six months.
Hey, think about what it could do for recruitment.
Yeah.
You never know. I mean, Hetrick had a phenomenal show with the coroner's office. So you know, I I don't see anything less, you know, sky's the limit. So thank you, and I look forward to all the greatness.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Chair Majors.
Thank you. If you need a moment, you're good. I can circle back. Oh, you're good. All right. Okay. Councilman Daniels.
Just wanted to confirm that the the upgrades will make sure that closed captioning and open captioning continues to exist.
A hundred percent.
All right, thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you for the updates. I just have I guess two questions. One, do you have any data regarding the e-newsletter subscriptions? I know I don't know if people even know that we have a newsletter.
Yes, we have, I believe, thirty-eight, thirty-nine hundred subscribers to that. That goes out every week in both English and Spanish.
Okay, and if someone is interested in subscribing, how do they do that? Or how can they view the?
Sure, so we make sure that we post our newsletters on all of our social media platforms as well. So if they don't receive it in their email box, they are able to see it when it gets posted on Facebook and Twitter and Instagram. Actually, I don't know if it gets posted to Instagram, but definitely Facebook and Twitter. So there are ways for people to showcase it or or see that way. And then there's when you click on the newsletter, you can, there are links within it to sign up through our subscription with MailChimp.
Okay, my second question was regarding the upgrades. I know in the past we talked about the station in the back where Emily sits to control and make all this magic happen. Will there be upgrades to that space as well?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. And how many companies responded to the RFP for this? How was Illuminated Integration selected?
Sure, Illuminated Integration gave us in the most simplistic terms, the most bang for the buck. They weren't the cheapest. But what they offered was the thing that I believe put Illuminated Integration over the top was the ability to have enhanced digital participation in meetings. They added that in there. That was one of the things that we explained was important to council. It was important to us. They added that in there. There were, I want to say, five or six different quotes. We had seven or eight visits, five or six quotes, and Illuminated Integration was the second least expensive option that we had.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, President Bowers. Vice President Gray.
Thank you, Councilman. I don't have any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Lawson.
Thank you. As as you were making your presentation, I I saw that you have opportunities for, I guess, people with talent, and Harrisburg has a lot of talent. Yeah, I I've seen that we have some some local groups that you're showing now and also some experiences that, you know, people can take part in the city. If any of these talented residents wanted to get in touch with you and say, hey, I have something for you to see, how would they do that?
My email is mmaisel@harrisburgpa.gov. My cell phone number is seven one seven six seven eight five one six six, open for business. Just call me and let me know.
Great, thank you very much. I I do appreciate the direction that Channel Twenty has been going, so again, thank you for for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. I had one question with the mics that are at the front table. I know we're getting two new, ten new ones, but that includes these and then the three at that table. Will they be able to be pulled closer? I feel like that's always an issue in people sharing.
The the issue with the microphone, so what, there are three up here right now. The microphone that Mr. Grover has is actually considered really good quality. That is, if you if you actually look at it, you could see it is a different version. It is a newer version than these two right here. So we're replacing these two and the ones up there. What these mics, the issue with these mics is that they are very direct. So if you picture a microphone and then invisible lines shooting out of it, that is the path that basically the the noise is coming from. Good quality mics, or at least the ones that we're going to be investing in, allow for noise to be picked up from three hundred and sixty degrees instead of dead on. And not only that, but you can tell if I'm standing here and it pops as it has multiple times, that it's the microphone over modulating. That shouldn't have to happen. So the microphones that we eventually are going to have installed will pick up the same here as it would over here, but you can't. The same here as it would over here, but you can't hear me right now because I'm over here. Um, so. You won't have to. Sit or speak directly into the microphone. Um, as much as uh President Bowers enjoys reminding uh individuals to do that, you won't have to much longer.
Okay, yeah, that was it because it's always so awkward up there. But now I see why, like you said, it you have to speak directly into it, which people have a hard time like bringing it towards them. Or if it's three people sitting right there, they're passing it along like a hot potato.
There will also be, I I believe, a microphone on the ceiling, which will help pick up AMI uh sound as well. So if, for whatever reason, a microphone fails or someone's sitting here and it's hard to pick up on either microphone, there will be other microphones as well.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a couple additional questions before we close. So. Said ten total mics. Um, does that include our mic for public comment as well? I think. We have seven up here.
Mm-hmm.
Mister, our our chief clerk would be eight, two mics there. That's ten. Just want to make sure we're we're getting enough. Of the new technology that's.
Correct. Uh, I do not believe that um the. Public microphone uh will be replaced. Um, but I can double check on that.
Okay, um, then counsel. President asked some of the other questions. Uh, I was asking regarding technology. Um, and then in terms of the overall. Finalized layout, is that the final designers or there's other opportunities once they get in here if they need to? Make any additional adjustments to the space?
This is just a mockup. Uh, thi- this is just a a. I asked them to put together something the other day for the purposes of this presentation, just so I could uh show counsel and um. Mister uh Dangler, who is the head of Illuminating Integration that we'll be working with, uh assured me that this is just. A design. Everything is up for um. Negotiation is the wrong word, but we can work.
Yeah, there's some flexibility within that. Okay, um. Don't know if we've gotten that far yet, but in terms of warranty on on any of the. Parts and our equipment. Just knowing, I mean, as I'm sure you know, you know, instruments fail, equipment fails. Um. What's?
I will have to review the contracts.
All right, yeah, we can get a a copy of that too. That'd be great. Um. Then in terms of the uh. The docu-series. Uh, how was that funded? Was that all just? Normal staff time or did was any of the uh police budget? I know we approved money for recruitment and retention. Um, just trying to figure out how. That was funded.
Sure, that was uh, we blocked out time. Uh, before the academy started, we went through the schedule and blocked out certain days. It was probably one day every. Three weeks or so uh where. We set aside on the calendar, Asher and Emily will be at Ambler, which Temple Ambler on that day. Um. We tried to make it as close to an eight-hour day as possible. Some days were longer. Um. We made sure that they made up for it uh on the back end of other days. Um, but it was our camera equipment that was used. Um, it was um. Our cars that were used to to go out there. So I mean, the the Communications Bureau. Basically took care of the funding for that uh project.
Okay, um. Does the Communication Bureau still oversee the three-one-one system? Do you have any? Updates on like how many people are utilizing three-one-one?
I don't on me. Uh, currently, we are still uh utilizing it. Uh, we are still paying for it. Um, I can provide to you an update tomorrow morning. On to in terms of how much it has been used.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh. And then I guess just, and then just one last thing on a. Website traffic. Do you have any numbers on how many people are are actually visiting? The city website. I know we talked about, you know, Facebook and some of the other, just trying to get a sense of how many.
It's a good, it's a good question. I'm still in the process of, i- if if I feel like every day I'm learning something new about our web system, WordPress, um, and. Finding that analytic data I have not been able to find yet. I don't know if Mister Bortner uh knows the answer to that question, but I'm sure we can discuss because I'd be uh, I'm as interested as anyone else. Yeah. Uh, I I mean, basically, I use. Every article that I. Put out there gets posted uh to Facebook for clicks. And I think the vast majority of. The vast majority of interaction that we get is from our social media accounts. Um, I do know that occasionally people will find something just because they're surfing Harrisburg P A dot gov, but. The vast majority of it will come from our social media accounts and and I can. See that analytic data. That is much easier.
Right, we have that traffic moving from social media to the website versus just unique folks.
Right, which is it precisely, which is why it's so important that any article that we. Publish on the website goes to our social media accounts because there is a uh a set following there. We do have. Close to fourteen thousand followers now on our Facebook page, um, which is. Up, I believe. About thirty-five hundred since uh a a year ago. So we know that there's significant growth there. We know that there's significant uh reach. Um, and clicks, so to speak. Uh, so. We're we're going to continue to do that, but in terms of what the actual website numbers are, I I'm going to get with Steve in the morning and figure that out.
Okay, and then just last question, since we do utilize um. Interpretation services here, is that another thing that could be integrated into the system?
Yes.
We do have. Okay.
Yes, uh, one of the the issues, I don't know if um. Asher or Emily has explained this before, but because we only have. Three.
Right, that's what, yeah, that's what.
We'll we'll be able to.
Inputs.
We'll be able to do picture and picture and and actually do it the way it's supposed to look. Excuse me. Um, is it what I was talking about earlier? Uh, do it the way it was, it's supposed to look instead of uh how it is now.
Back, right, edit it in later. Okay, all right, great. Now I think. All those upgrades are are. Will be a a dramatic improvement and a a a great way to improve uh. The user relationship between our residents and um our government here. So thank you. Um, if there are any additional questions for Director Maisel, um, we'll let you go for the evening. Thank you for being here and then we'll bring up a. The quarterly report for the Bureau of I T and we have Mister uh Director Porter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You may proceed.
Uh, good evening, City Council, uh Steve Bortner, I T directors. Nice to be here this evening and give you another. Uh, update on the activities in the I T bureau. I'm going to start out with the Operation Municipal Migration Project. Um. As you know, my last report, we implemented the financials phase. So we have five more phases to go, uh, three of which are actively being worked on. Uh, first one is human capital management. Uh, currently scheduled to go live in January. Um, and then that'll eliminate um our mainframe. Uh, personnel system and the paycheck system. Uh, the second phase we're working on is tax billing and collections uh scheduled to be implemented. Uh, in October, and that'll eliminate the mainframe property tax system. Uh, and then other active phases, uh licenses, permits and codes enforcement. Uh, scheduled to go live in March of next year. Uh, utility billing is scheduled to get started this quarter and then asset. Uh, management to get started uh later this month. Uh, currently, there's been about thirty-four hundred hours of time put in by city employees. And uh, we have. Uh, approved POs and contracts for one point three four two million dollars. Uh, spent so far, five hundred and twenty-two thousand. And the remaining amount is eight hundred and twenty thousand. Um, so that's the report on the Operation Municipal Migration Project. Um. Uh, the water damage in the lower level, uh, we are planning to move our mainframe uh computing and storage capacity to. Uh, our vendor's data center in Omaha the weekend of April the twenty-first. So that's currently. Planned to be started Friday and end uh by sometime Sunday. Um, and along with that, we have not discovered any additional damaged equipment. Uh, so far. Um, and I did make a note of the three-one-one issue that some residents are having, so I will look into that. And the question about website visitors, um, that is a report I get every month from our. Uh, website, hosting company Gavin Communication, so I'll be able to provide that. I think I can go back to uh twenty-twenty-one with those numbers. Um, and I think you should also have a copy of uh the I T budget. Um, just kind of give you the highlights, uh, personnel, since we are fully staffed, we will pretty much. Spend the entire amount that was budgeted other than about uh twenty thousand dollars. Um, as far as services go, we had a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar. Um, adjustment to move the mainframe to our uh hosted data center. And then with supplies and capital, no anticipated um. Changes or issues with what's currently in the budget. And that's my report.
Okay. Thank you. I will start. Again, to my left with uh Councilman. Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Councilman Majors. Um, thank you, Mr. Steve, for joining us this evening, um, giving us this grateful uh priceless information. Um, I I think I heard it correctly. If I haven't, please excuse me. Uh, I know there was hard drives that were real sensitive that we weren't sure about yet.
Right, that is in our secondary storage network, which is basically not online and and is not an issue with being able to access our system.
Okay.
Uh, once we migrate to Omaha, that will get shut down.
Okay, so nothing real vital, just mainly hardware?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
All right, thank you. Oh, go to President Bowers.
Thank you. I believe you addressed this with the uh budget, but I think the anticipation, God bless you. Was for the help desk and PC specialist vacancy to be filled this quarter along with the deputy director vacancy. So they've both been.
Both of those have been filled, yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
All right, Vice President Gray.
Thank you. I don't have any questions for you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lawson.
Thank you. No, no questions tonight. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you. I had one question. Um, with. The new updated um technology that is coming. Will there be anything updated for how residents can participate in our meetings from home? Um, then. Maybe make it easier for them?
Um, with what Matt had presented earlier, yes, that will make that easier for residents at home. Um, we do have the ability to do that now. It's not the best solution, but uh, yes, we will have a much better solution.
Okay, and there will be some type of. Public notification of, hey, you can, this is the way you can participate.
We'll have, yes, we'll have to make sure that that is communicated.
Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you for being here this evening. Sorry if I didn't say good evening.
That's fine.
All right, and Councilwoman Daniels.
I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you, and uh, as for Solicitor Grover, just real quick, we we did take care of all of the necessary. Rule changes to ensure we could do virtual. Participation.
Passed an ordinance that allowed for it and uh.
And these I T upgrades are going to help.
Actually make that possible.
Possible, right. Yep. Okay. Um, I have no questions. Most of the questions that I were going to have were already answered in your report and we appreciate. Your uh. The completion and brevity of the report. I mean, you you cover everything, especially as we're continuing to fit finish up on these. This migration and update this system that's been in need of it. Um. And thank you for all the hard work and the hard work of the I T department to make this happen. Uh, so thank you and uh with any further questions, that ends the business of the Building and Housing Committee, and I will turn it back over to you, President Bowers.
Thank you, Chair Majors. We will conclude our evening with the work of the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will defer to Chair Daniels.
Um, before we start with Mister Knight, um, could we have an update on the status of the C D B G contracts?
I am still working on fixing the ordinance, so.
Um, Mister Knight, if you don't mind introducing yourself and going over your quarterly report.
Uh, sure, uh, Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director um with the city um in. As I was just saying, they're looking at it. Um, the first quarter numbers are actually only for March, I think, so. Multiply these by about a a third or times three. Uh, apologies for that, but I was just saying they're looking at it going, I know I've been busier than this. Um, and uh, so, but this is kind of uh the same format I've been um providing to council uh for our last few quarterly reports and I'm. Kind of updating it just so you're able to compare against the pri- prior quarter. So that's kind of what you're seeing before and then the prior year. Uh, so, because I know there's been some questions about, um, is this a particularly, you know. Heavy workload, light workload, whatever, and this should be giving you uh an update on that. Now, I can provide the updated figures tomorrow morning. Um, so that'll give you a little bit of a better idea. Um, but basically, we've been seeing um really an uptick. Uh, this uh first quarter uh in overall uh work coming in in terms of both. Uh, mercataut permits, um, building permits. Uh, and right-to-no requests especially, uh, the right-to-no requests have been uh pretty pronounced. Um, this year, um, but um, you know, we've been holding down the fort up there. Um, and by that, I mean, um, Catherine Carini and myself, uh, she's the Urban Planner One. And uh Ben, I think, you know, largely been able to handle the uh workload that's uh been coming across my desk. Um, as far as our zoning and land development, and that's kind of our planning commission and zoning hearing board um cases. Uh, you'll see that we um have gotten ten zoning relief applications, and that's compared to like seven in the last quarter of um twenty-twenty-two. Um, for subdivision land development plans uh compared to one and uh no real street vacations uh yet recently, but. You know, I think that land development plan um number uh attest to the kind of. Um, both the timing uh in the year as people are ramping up into the building season, uh, spring, summer, fall. Um, they're starting to put uh more of these applications into the bureau for the planning commission's review. Um, and you know, some of these have been fairly large. Um. Uh, project up on uh North Sixth Street around Emerald Street was a fairly large, uh, I think forty-nine unit proposal. Um, and then we've had some smaller uh row home development proposals as well uh during that time. Um. As far as our historic preservation, that's our Architectural Review Board, uh, which we just had a meeting for that last night. Um, we've seen a pretty significant uptick in cases uh this quarter relative to uh both. Uh, last year and the last quarter. Um. In addition to the ten cases they've heard, they've also been um in the midst of their review of the bylaws, uh, and then we actually. Had uh Frank Grumbine uh from the Pennsylvania Historic and Museum Commission uh who used to be the historic preservation specialist here. Uh, come and present last night to uh address the end of uh the issue of. Um, windows specifically, but kind of um alternative materials in placing um aspects on historic properties. Um, being that it is an issue that's been coming up more frequently. Um, especially as, you know, things like wood windows get harder to to buy. Uh, as a lot of window manufacturers are moving towards kind of alternative products, fiberglass, composites, things of that nature. Um, so wanted to bring him in to uh give his perspective, both as somebody who's worked here in the city, but. Who has now spent about a year and a quarter um out um. His region is central P A, um, so P H M C, so he, you know, gets to work with a bunch of different municipalities, Lancaster, York, Williamsburg, kind of all over the. Uh, center of the region and to kind of bring some of uh that experience um into that conversation. So. It's been really helpful in terms of giving guidance to the board um into how they should approach the projects moving forward. Um. Again, floodplain uh uh reviews, project reviews. Um, those have been uh a little high, you know, for uh for the first quarter. Um, largely minor things like signs and fences and stuff like that, and that's not uncommon. Uh, that will get again at the beginning of a construction period. Um, other than that, uh. You know, I think a lot of the long-term planning initiatives that the board would, that the bureau would like to be. Uh, focused on um are hampered a bit by uh the vacancies that we have in the department. Um, you know, especially with something like zoning code amendments. I know we've heard from the public, heard from some of the zoning hearing board. I know we've heard from the public, heard from some of the zoning hearing board members, planning commissioners. Uh, and I believe I've spoken before, counsel before about, you know, working on trying to, um, amend some of our zoning regulations to reflect kind of more what we're seeing out in the public, whether that's, uh, increasing, you know, latitude for signage regulations or working within, uh, the section of our zoning code, the table that prevent, that describes like what permitted uses are. And that kind of, uh, you know, follows along with, uh, the short-term rental, uh, review that council went over last week. Um, you know, putting those all, doing zoning code amendments are particularly challenging because since you're changing the whole code, you've got to really, uh, the notification advertisement, um, uh, requirements are pretty onerous. So you really want to know, really want to make sure you're including everything in one go around so that you're not having to do like a signage packet here and a use packet here, uh, you know, things like that. So, uh, getting our mind around everything that we want to do and then figuring out, you know, what the requirements are for notification. Um, just a little bit challenging with our capacity issues, uh, right now. And kind of speaking to that, um, within the administrative section down there, you know, we've had the planning director, deputy planning director position out there for probably six months, since I think October last year. Uh, and just am not really getting a whole lot of candidates. Um, kind of surprising, but you know, I think when we talk to um, other departments as well as, um, just people in the private sector even, it's just really hard to hire right now. Um, for probably a variety of reasons. Um, and so we're kind of caught up in that. And, um, you know, I don't know whether an extra five thousand dollars here or there on each position is going to make a difference or whether it's enhanced outreach or what, but, um, you know, the positions still to this day are, are vacant. So, um, you know, it, like I said, it's definitely, um, impacting the ability to respond to everything in as timely a manner as possible and as timely manner as we like to, uh, for the public. But, um, I don't think it's impacted or the core functions of, uh, the department really, like the planning commission or our, you know, floodplain reviews really. Uh, so I think we're still, you know, holding steady, but, um, it's, uh, definitely required a few, uh, extra hours.
Yeah. And I don't know, um, uh, I didn't send you this question ahead of time, but if you either have a way to find the answer or have it right now, do you have a sense of how many of the land development plans that have been approved are, are incomplete as of today?
When you say incomplete, what do you mean? Like not through the whole process yet?
Yeah, they just, they're.
Um, I believe that of the four we've had, City Council's approved one, one is in legislation that's either been introduced or will be. And the two others, yeah, and the two others are just waiting for me to, um, get the resolutions together and send them to the law.
Um, and then that was the only question I had. Um, I'll just open it up to my fellow council members. Um, I'll start to my right, uh, Councilwoman Rawls, if you have any questions for Mr. Knight.
Uh, good evening, Director Knight. I don't have any, um, current questions right now. Thank you.
And it's sorry, I just remembered. It, this is either for Mr. Grover or for you. Um, uh, the last time we had, when we had the presentations around, uh, short-term rentals, um, I, I got a lot of questions afterwards from the public about clarification on the boarding room definition under our zoning code and then property maintenance. So if you, either one of you would like to clarify what those rules are.
No, I, I would have to look it up. That's the reality because they're two different codes. I will tell you that the initial discussions, uh, means that we, in doing this ordinance approach probably requires us to clarify some of the other.
I, I mean, as it is now.
Right. But I just can't tell you off the top of my head, the definitions. They're, they're, our definitions are not necessarily always consistent. So I can get you exactly word for word if you would like them, uh, and email them to you.
Um, that was the other question. Um, next, uh, Councilman, uh, Lawson.
Thank you. And, um, Director Knight, um, I, just working with a lot of people who, who want to get into, uh, developing real estate and, and creating affordable housing. What would you say are, are best practices to try to, um, streamline that process so that they can present a plan to you and, and have something that, you know, could be voted on and, and, and make its way through?
Um, yeah, I think, you know, the, we do, you know, get occasional questions like, I want to develop a football housing. How do I do that in the city? That's a, that's a loaded question. It, it can go in a variety of different ways. But, you know, we usually what I'll do is I'll send, uh, somebody to ask me about that, um, you know, a link, um, to both our, the zoning map online. Um, and then the zoning code document, and I'll kind of point out, um, some high-level stuff like, uh, for example, you know, you want to look for properties in the community, uh, commercial neighborhood district because it allows, uh, multifamily dwellings by right as opposed to like the residential medium density district. So that's going to be another zoning relief request. And the density regulations are a little bit more, uh, lenient. So you'll be asking for like less relief, depending on how many units you do. Um, and then I usually request a preliminary site plan from them. Um, so it's usually the first step is, okay, what, you know, knowing what you want to do as opposed to just kind of like, I'd like somebody to tell me what to do. Um, and then having kind of a basic understanding of the zoning in the city to say, okay, I want to do a multifamily dwelling, which is what, you know, most of the time what you're getting, especially when you're talking about affordable housing. Um, you know, the RM district, again, it's going to be an extra layer of zoning relief. Um, so maybe I'm going to be looking in the riverfront district or the commercial neighborhood district that will help, uh, at least refine my search a little bit. And then once you dig into the development standards a little bit more, what are the, uh, setback requirements, uh, density regulations? Like just having a cursory understanding of what that is, I think really goes a long way to being able to look at a map and say, yeah, that area is probably, that property is too small. Um, or, you know, I'm not going to be able to get into the rear of the property to put in a parking lot or something like that. Um, but usually if, uh, somebody's advanced their project to the point where they have a site plan, I, you know, solicit their, solicit that documentation and say, you know, if you're, if you're to that point, I can usually respond to that. And I can usually look at something and say, um, all right, you're going to need, um, a lot consolidation, a land development plan, and these three zoning relief requests.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's very helpful. And then I believe also in your position, you're, you're kind of a forecaster, you can see what we have coming down the pike and, and getting a sense for, um, what the city should expect as far as development and, um, I guess even, you know, financial input from, from the outside. Like, wh- what are you seeing this year? Does it look like we're pulling in more investment than previous years? Or are we running a little behind or?
Um, well, you know, I think, you know, from the, the data here, we're definitely seeing more, you know, land development, um, which I think is good. And I think, uh, what that may accelerate, I mean, if I could predict the future, I'd probably be a rich man. But, um, you know, I think we'll see that accelerate a little bit in the, especially in the Sixth and Seventh Street corridors because the federal courthouse will be coming online. Um, we've already, you know, I've had conversations over the last year or two um, with different developers about sites, but, um, you know, the city council reviewed fifteen-twenty North Sixth Street, I believe, already this year. So I wouldn't be surprised if you start seeing more of those things. Once you have workers there, um, they're going to need places to go to lunch, places to do copying, stuff like that. And, and I think that those types of uses and those types of businesses will be folded into larger projects. So like mixed-use buildings similar to that property. Um, and, uh, you know, I think looking a little bit further out, um, we're maybe going to be looking at what does the eighty-three expansion look like for the city? I mean, they obviously demoed those properties on the south side of that. Um, once they go through and they widen the highway, what's left over? And then like, are those developable? Um, I don't know whether like PennDOT is going to keep them for stormwater management basins or whether they'll look, they'll see what they have left and then look to like sell it back to the private sector. And then what kinds of developments will go there? You know, you're going to be on a bigger highway. So is it going to be an apartment building? Is it going to be an office building, things of that nature? Um, you know, I think that, that's going to be really the big, uh, a big change, especially kind of going through South Harrisburg, especially because, you know, PennDOT has kind of mitigation, um, requirements as part of that, whether it's again managing more stormwater management, um, because of the impervious surface coverage, whether it's, um, enhancing community, uh, you know, providing community benefits as part of that. Like, um, I think they were talking about putting, you know, parking lot for the green belt under, um, under eighty-three down near the river, uh, near this, um, CRW sewage, uh, pumping station down there, um, things of that nature. Uh, so, um, you know, that's kind of a little further off, uh, but in the near future, I definitely see, you know, Sixth and Seventh Street growing a little bit more. And, um, I think for the cities and it's really incumbent upon um, how we respond, uh, to that development, um, or i- if that gets more dense, are we going to be asking CAP or, or, or Serta, I guess, uh, to run more, uh, routes of that way or more frequent routes? You know, because if we're expecting the same, you know, ratio of like buildings to drivers, you know, it could get really congested up there. So we're going to need to be thinking ahead about how people are going to get around in that corridor and what steps we need to take as a city to be proactive to address that.
Great. Thank you. That's, that's everything I had. I appreciate you.
Vice President Green.
Thank you. I don't have many questions. Um, one is just, uh, how's the process of, um, getting more staff in the office going? I know you're a busy man, but, uh, I know you have some vacancies open.
Yeah. So, um, like I said, uh, we've had the deputy planning director one out there for a few months now and, and just have not gotten a lot of hits. So, um, my focus now is, um, switching over to the historic preservation specialist position and trying to promote that a bit more because that can at least take some of the, uh, work off my plate. Um, it's, I think it's harder to find somebody for that because you kind of do have to have specialized in that, either in your undergrad or graduate work or your, um, uh, actual experience, um, professional experience. Um, so the pool's probably smaller, um, but, you know, my hope is that, um, we're able to find somebody to do that, especially now where we're coming into the end of the school year. Um, so we'll have more people graduating and, um, hopefully that means there's an uptick in the, uh, um, number of applicants that we receive.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for sharing.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez.
No questions. Thank you for being here, Director Knight.
Thank you so much. Um, and yeah, but Mr. Grover, if you could follow up on the warming board on the mission. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this time we will move to public comment. Just for housekeeping, if anyone is interested in making a public comment, please state your name and your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. You'll have two minutes to share your comment and Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section. Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left. Seeing and hearing no one. Uh, before we adjourn, uh, Vice President Green would like to share an announcement regarding upcoming town hall meetings. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, I just wanted to announce publicly that, uh, Harrisburg City Council will be hosting a series of public town hall meetings for the American Rescue Plan Act funding, also known as the ARPA funding. Uh, the three dates for these meetings will be April twelfth from five-thirty to seven-thirty here at the Government Center, the MLK Building, right here, where we host our regular meetings at. Uh, the second meeting will be April thirteenth from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Camp Curtain YMCA on North Sixth Street. And then the third meeting will be held Saturday, April fifteenth from eleven-thirty AM until one-thirty PM at Mount Olive Baptist Church, thirteen thirty-one South Fourteenth Street, Harrisburg. Um, flyers will be being made available tomorrow to the public. Um, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the city clerk's office, uh, and we will make sure that we get the information to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The time is seven-eleven PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.